I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Clancy?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mrs. Truppo?
Here.
Mr. Basic. Mr. Dukuliac?
Here.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
We're not done.
You're not done? We don't want to approve them. Okay, thanks. Is there any old business? I'm assuming there is.
Yes, the table item.
All right, let's go ahead with it.
All right, before we get into it, just want to briefly go over our process again. So again, we're at the planning commission stage. Application was tabled at the February 11th meeting, so we're here again on the 25th. As a reminder, planning commission is a recommending body in this case, so whether they recommend approval or denial, it'll be sent to planning committee on March 6th. And then from there, planning committee will review it, take public comment again, and if they choose to move it on, they can move on to council that night unless they decide to hold it in committee for further information. So again, this is a recommendation tonight, and then there'll be another chance for public comment on March 6th. So we already went over this. Planning Commission requested some additional information, so I will, I have all the slides from the last presentation up here, I can come back to them. I'll breeze through them quickly as a refresher. So site plan for Sheets, again, it's two conditional uses, one for a gas station, one for a drive-through facility. And as a reminder, the comprehensive plan designates this area as retail service, which is the general commercial designation, and it's also in focus area J. Comprehensive plan in focus area J, there's 10 focus areas in the city according to the plan. Focus area J states that, the recommendation recommends that should limit the potential for future retail in the area. Consider proactively down zoning parcels that are surrounded by residential. If an existing business is expanding, that it should only be supported when landscaping, and building design would upgrade the appearance. Section B encourages infill residential development. C recommends to allow senior care facilities, which it is as a conditional use. D is to, recommends to install sidewalks to improve walkability of the area. Sidewalks would be installed with this project. And E is to monitor traffic and make improvements as needed, and there will be some improvements for this site. These are all the building setbacks which they comply with. Landscaping plan, 69% of the lot area will be, remain as landscaped, include 11 shade trees around the property, and 5.3% of the parking lot will be landscaped with islands and trees as required. This plan was approved by the city arborist. Lighting plan, they do require a variance from one of those requirements. You can have one-half foot candle at the property line at a maximum. They would go to approximately 3.1 foot candles at the access drive, so they would require a variance from that. Elevations, again, it'll be 26 feet in height. For the gas canopy, they do require two variances, one to exceed the height, and one to allow for backlit canopy. From the traffic impact study, there will be some improvements. Those will be a deceleration lane southbound on Fish Creek Road. There'll be a deceleration lane westbound on Still Road, as well as a right turn lane eastbound on Still Road, and there will be some signal timing improvements to existing traffic signal. And those costs will be covered by the developer. At the previous meeting, the city engineer indicated that these improvements would slightly improve traffic in this area. These are all the supplemental regulations for these conditional uses. They were listed in the staff report. I won't go over them in detail, but this is where some of the setbacks are coming from. There's some information about restricting loudspeakers for drive-through facilities. They comply with all these, but I'll come back to them if you need to review them. All right, and this is the original site plan. So again, two conditional uses, three original variances. Since the last meeting, they did submit a revised set of plans, which was in that additional information packet. That one include reducing the interior parking lot landscaping. And the goal of that is to preserve some more wetlands. So with this revised plan, they would reduce that landscaped island at the drive-through, which would preserve about 2,700 square feet more in wetlands. That would take down the interior parking lot landscaping from, what is it, 5.3% to 2.5%. So if this plan were approved, it would require an additional variance. And this is just showing more closely what that looks like with that reduced island. They would replace one of those trees at the access drive. I would just ask, planning commission, as you make a motion for recommendation, just clarify which plan you are voting on, whether it's for the original or for the revised with the additional variance. And then planning commission also recommended, or requested more information about the underground detention. Engineer has reviewed all this, so the stormwater will discharge to the northeast corner and to the existing storm sewer system that goes under Fish Creek. Again, this will be an underground detention system, and the storage volume and discharge rate does comply with the Mudbrook watershed district requirements. And this is also designed to accommodate the 100-year storm, which is required per code. So this is my last slide. Again, there's a lot of information that was submitted in that additional packet, but I'll leave this, leave this slide up for review, and happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Does Sheets want to make any statements at all? Once again, state your name and address once you get that on.
I remember from the last time, thank goodness. Diane Calltime here is Sheets Land Development Council, I'm with Mancer Gavin, and my address is 1001 Lakeside Avenue, and that's in Cleveland, Ohio. I have the Sheets team here. We wanted to just walk through some of that information with you.
Before you do that, do you solemnly declare and affirm that what you are about to say shall be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Now go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I have the Sheets team here with me tonight. I have Ellen Selly, our entitlement manager, our site selector, Owen Wolfe, and our regional entitlement manager, Ryan Balco. I didn't really have anything else prepared, we just really wanted to follow up on those. I put them in three items, the wetlands, the stormwater, and the detention, and the lighting, which you are all providing additional information, and then we'll have Ellen just walk through that, and we're, any of us are able to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone from the audience care to comment? If you do, please raise your hand. Okay, hopefully you've all signed in. If you haven't, please do so, and I need that list. We're going to keep comments to three minutes per person, and I will let you know when, when your time is up. Not trying to limit what's being said, we just want to make sure everybody gets an opportunity to talk. Thank you.
Would I be able to talk to one hand or?
Oh, absolutely. Yep, just name and address, yep.
I'm Ellen Selly, I'm with Sheets, 351 Sheets Way, Altoona, Pennsylvania.
And do you solemnly declare and affirm that what you are about to say shall be the truth?
Yes.
Fine, go ahead.
So I just wanted to walk through a few of these things that were resubmitted, mainly it, can we switch to that other one, Zach, with the new site plan? Yeah, this one's fine. So the other sheet that you guys just looked at recently, it included this variance, and I think I mentioned it last time, that we had the larger landscape island originally here, and this was to meet your code. So this landscaping hasn't gone away with this new site plan, it is just relocated from the island over to the wetland. So total landscaping onsite doesn't change, it's just the location of it has changed to help preserve that. Some other things we did to help add a little more to the wetland, too, was originally we were taking our grading down with a kind of a more gentle slope. We've made that steeper, so instead of a three-to-one, we're a two-to-one, so we're more quickly coming down to those wetland areas, so again, just gain a little more wetland back where we can. And then we've also added a fence, so it runs like the L shape around the site, six-foot board-on-board fence, just to help keep that separation between any kind of wildlife and the development. We have a few other things with the wetland that I'll just kind of run through. We had a delineation report that was done by HCW. That then goes to the Ohio EPA, and they provide AJD, which we just got back today. And now that we have that, then we can go ahead and make our submittal to the EPA to get these wetland mitigation credits, and we can make that application so we can purchase those credits. And just a reminder, I think we talked last time, too, that this, the wetland credits are purchased within the watershed, so somewhere in this general area, those wetlands will be preserved, it's just not on this site specifically. I think we did a good job kind of going over that stormwater, and that all has been approved by the city, that design with the detention. The majority of the site goes to this area anyways, and then the rest of it, what's predeveloped, would go to the wetland that eventually drains to Fish Creek Road as well. So I think there was a comment last time about maybe the stormwater going in a different place than it does right now, and that, that's not the case. This is all designed to match the current conditions of where the stormwater currently goes today, and really set the proper rate that's been approved by the city. I think there are a few other questions, too, on just the photometric, and maybe if we could switch to that plan, too, Zach? So those foot candles, just a reminder that, you know, that's the cutoff levels at the edges of our property. We really do like those driveway entrances to be well lit, so people can see this is where you're turning in. That's why we've asked for a variance for those. And I think it's mainly that cutoff is where we share a drive with the neighbor, so we will talk with them about getting any kind of variances or any kind of easements we would need, and I think we already have all those in place to make sure that we can have cross traffic, have, you know, cross lumens passing between different sites, but it's just to make that area well lit so people can see coming into it. And then I did talk to some of the lighting people on my team, too, just so I got a better sense of how the lighting works on our site. And I was told that all of our lighting, you know, we have these LED heads that are flat, and it points all those lights down, that's what our site lighting looks like. And then the building lighting, same thing, it all points downwards, so we don't have any light that's shining up, with the exception of lighting a flagpole, that is the one light that will shine up, unless that was part of your code to change that, and we could, we could address that any way that we needed to, by putting a light on the flagpole and shining down, but standard, it's just to have it sit on the ground and shine up. But if you had any other questions on how we changed the site plan since last time, I can answer those for you.
Any questions?
So originally, the total amount of wetland on this area is slated, is estimated to be what, do we have that?
So the total?
Predevelopment?
Predevelopment, it is 9.87 acres of wetland, so that's the blue and the red all added together.
Okay.
And then altogether with the new site plan, it's .51 that we would be mitigating and requesting the credits.
Okay.
Should we wait to?
We'll wait until you comment. Any other questions? Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, we will start with comments from the audience, we'll start in the first row. So we will start with Mr. Underwood, if you want to speak or not. Once again, when you get up here, state your name and your address, and before you do that, everyone who said they want to speak, if you could raise your arm and affirm that we're going to do this. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that what you are about to say shall be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
My name's David Underwood, I'm from 3776 Fish Creek Road. I am the owner of the property. I just wanted to state, being, you know, the due diligence has thoroughly been done and everything, that, you know, I've owned this property for a considerable amount of time. I paid property tax on this property for a considerable amount of time, and also, the zoning fits the use of this project. And as far as, you know, questions with wetlands and everything, I think that's been thoroughly discussed. As last meeting, I stated, a lot of that was implemented by the city and the county, and, you know, and I'm not going to mix words about that at all. So the bottom line is, you know, I think the project, I think you guys ought to bless it, I think it's going to be a great use, and I think will be a total asset for the city.
Thank you. All right, we will continue on down, starting with you, ma'am. State your name and address and?
My name's Karen Jesse, I live at 1563 Bob White Trail here in Stowe. I have lots of things I want to say, but I've got three minutes, I'll say one point. It has to do with the wetlands, and I'm going to bring it up over and over again. I don't buy for a minute, not for a nanosecond, what the Sheet's sales team has is their demarcation line, that the wetlands conveniently end right where their gas station needs to be. I maintain that all of that land is at best fragile, okay? Wetlands, over here, it's totally fine, I don't buy that. I don't think that that land should be used for having huge holding tanks for toxic gasoline. And that's all I'm going to say, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rosalina Jesse, 5020 Fish Creek Road. We live very next to that property. I want to say that that is a residential area next to it, where there will be a lot of light pollution, noise pollution, water pollution, and my neighbors and I, we still work, so we can pay our taxes to keep, to live where we live, because we love that place, to keep our representatives looking after us, after us, after us, for our wellbeing. So I don't think that is a good idea to have that gas station there. The next, there's a gas station next to it, that is Rebel, that is a very, there is a gas station that needs a lot of help. If they can look to take that one instead and leave that place just as it is, that wetland has a lot of wild life. I can see, because I'm next to it, that there is a lot of birds arriving already, a lot of wild life. All these birds, they come from thousands of miles here to nest. Can we just feel a little care for them, for the wildlife, too? Thank you.
Thank you.
David Jesse at 5020 Fish Creek Road. I had something prepared, I'm not going to use it, I want to talk about the storm sewers, which are completely inadequate. Every time it rains over a half an inch, our property floods. Fortunately, not our basement, but the backyard, the front yard, the driveway, it floods. The sewers out at the road, they're just, they're just open, are filled. The water does not run into the storm sewer, the storm sewer entrance is higher than all our property. My father-in-law, who built the house at 5020 Fish Creek that I've been in for 50 years, was a surveyor, and he continuously told the city the storm sewers were built incorrectly. If they're planning to move the water into the storm sewer, that'll just make our flooding that much worse, rather than making it better. I know I'm probably close to out of time.
You're so good.
The wildlife is critical, I'm trying to defend them, as well as my own property. That might sound like something that somebody makes up just to make a point, but it's absolutely true. Raccoons eat out of my hand, skunks eat out of my hand. I haven't had any luck with deer yet, still working on it. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Anyone else in the first row?
My name's Bob Powers, I live at 5050 Fish Creek. My big thing is, is we really don't need this in our neighborhood to screw it up. I mean, it's, with the schools, with their turing and everything, Fish Creek is already screwed up enough as it is. And the other thing is, if these guys are hell-bent on screwing up our neighborhood by putting another gas station in, at least let's keep the canopy down to 17 feet, we don't need it that high. We're already going to have enough light nuisance as it is, so we don't need any more lightning. 17 feet, oops, the other gas stations are fine with that, they should be fine with it, it doesn't need to be that tall. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Erin Mundor, 4451 Pembroke Court, Stowe, Ohio. Sheets has said that they'll pursue wetland mitigation credits. I work in this field as a water resources engineer, and am very familiar with the permitting they would have to pursue. I have purchased wetland mitigation credits on behalf of clients before, therefore I know how few wetland mitigation credits are available within the Cuyahoga River watershed. There are no available credits within Summit County, so whatever they purchase will not even be within Summit County, and therefore will provide very little benefit to any of the wildlife, or help solve any of the water flood storage concerns we've mentioned here. The commission asked for more information from Sheets in regards to the ability of the gas station to store and manage water on site without exacerbating flooding issues. I can tell you that when you fill in wetlands, and they're filling in about an acre or whatever now, you are losing that capacity of storage, and you're exacerbating issues, because when you add impervious pavement in, water can no longer soak directly into the ground, but it will run off into the adjacent areas, which the residents of the area indicate that's already an issue. Therefore, I would expect the flooding issues to become worse in the area, even with their underground storage connecting to the municipal water management system, which also gets overwhelmed during storm events, and may be improperly sized. At least some of the runoff from the pavement would also run into the adjacent areas unless the whole site is sloped to force runoff into their system, which I doubt it will be. I again ask the county commission to not recommend this growth in the city, and plan for balance, and allow the other Sheet's gas station currently in development, and think about the other wishes of the residents of this town.
Thank you. Sir? Okay, third row, is there anybody in the third?
Good evening. My name is Robert Miller, 2110 Stone Bridge Crossing. I want to go on record to say I'm also opposing the third gas station going into that intersection. The traffic, I'm hoping that if it goes forward, that you do something with the traffic light, maybe timing it during the rush hour, to let that Fish Creek traffic go through. I notice many times that we pull out, we can't get out of the Stone Bridge Crossing area because of the traffic is backed up. Also concern on stormwater. The lady said that she's concerned on the saturation right now, you can see the waters sitting on the lot. And I don't know what size the storms are on Fish Creek and along Still Road, but I'm concerned on blacktop going down, and that you have the catch basin sized accordingly to get the water to flow into the storm. Also concerned on the water, rainwater coming down. If you put the drawing back up, can we see the one where you have the pond with pipes Into the retention? You saw pipes, big, large pipes, right? That one there, right? Is that the pond that the water will be collected, rainwater?
It would not be a pond, it would be an underground detention system, so it would be covered up.
It'll be covered up, but will the, will the excavation be dry or wet? A wet retention or a dry retention?
It would be underground, so all the water would filter to this underground system, and then be filtered through the existing stormwater facilities under Fish Creek Road.
Okay, so I didn't see any head walls or anything coming into that pond?
Yeah, yeah, it's not a pond, this would be covered up, it'd be under the concrete, it'd be covered up.
Where does the water go that goes into the pipe?
The water would go into, it would be discharged at the northeast corner, so if you look on the screen.
Can you point to it there?
Yep, so there's an outlet here.
Yep.
The ST is the storm, so it would go out here, this is Fish Creek at the top, so connecting into this, into this outlet, it'd run under Fish Creek and go into the system there.
Now, isn't the?
You've got 20 seconds.
Isn't the underground over to the left here?
This is the underground detention area.
Yeah, isn't that to the left of the building? Isn't that Fish Creek up there, and the retention is over here?
Fish Creek is at the top of the screen.
Right.
The underground detention is this entire area in front of the building.
Okay. Well, my concern is that you have catch basins that are?
Your time's up, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else in the third row? No. How about the next row?
Yeah, my name's Gary Pepper, I live at 5030 Fish Creek Road. I don't know, I can't see that we need another gas station there on that small highway, but every time construction comes up, it turns my place into a swampland. I'm looking, they're going to fill in- I'm looking, they're going to fill in part of this water area. All they're going to do is direct the water straight over to my house. I don't want my house to be a wetlands, I don't, you know. Floods my basement every time, last two constructions on Fish Creek Road, backed up and into my basement. My basement seems to be the one that gets it first. And I just don't look forward to it, I don't see anything good coming to that. Okay, and while I'm up here, I'd like to thank the Stowe Street Department. We had a chuck hole out beside our house. They were there within three hours of the time I called, great people.
We'll pass it on, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Joyce Barman, I'm at 5016 Fish Creek. And I realize, like you had said, that the zoning fits for the gas station. Well, I'm glad that it fits according to the zoning, but if you look at the area, we already have two gas stations. You have Rebel and you have the other. You bring in Sheets, Rebel's going to go out and it's going to be an ISO. It's already struggling compared to Circle K, the amount of traffic that goes where, okay? So like it had been suggested before, by Sheetz, uh, by the Rebel. The wetlands, they're not going to be protected. You said that you're going to preserve some of the wetlands? The percentage of what's there and what's going to be there? The wetlands, like all my neighbors have said, the wetlands are now going to be all of our places. The wildlife that we have, like Dave said, we love our deer, we love our turkeys, we love our ducks, we love the geese, we love the raccoon, we, it's part of the beauty, the owls, with the lights, the canopies, all of that's going to be gone. Is it necessary to have three gas stations on the corner right there? We have two elementary schools, come on. It's overkill, it's not necessary. The traffic, at the last meeting, you said that it was going to improve traffic by 3%? I know what I deal with, like I had said, when I, I'm on call at the Cleveland Clinic down at the main campus. When I get a call and I'm trying to be at a helicopter to save someone's life and to meet the family and the patient to get there, I can't turn left out of my driveway during high hours. 3% is what is going to benefit us? Where is that a benefit? Am I wrong? So with that, I adamantly oppose this gas station going in. You have the, okay, and we, we'll, we'll support you on 59. We've got the three ga, the two gas stations, we've got GetGo, we've got the one down on the corner of Fish Creek and Graham. Enough is enough. We want to preserve the beauty of Fish Creek and what we have come to love and, and we take care of the properties. You know, that's part of the beauty of being where we are. So thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Rick Bolton, I live at 5034 Fish Creek. One of the questions I have, all those tanks, do they drain into the storm sewer on Fish Creek, correct?
Yes.
So that water is going to move west, correct?
I don't know. I don't know that answer. I know it's going to go into the system.
Because west is downhill, it's not, it's not going to run uphill. So it's going to run to our properties. It's, it's kind of simple elevation thing. Other question, I've been in the construction business. How much traffic problems are we going to have when they start clearing all the timber out there? They can't get off the road, they're going to have to park their trucks on the street to load the timber to get it out. It's going to tie up traffic for a month, whatever. Third thing is, if you want an idea of what that station is going to do to the traffic, go to Kent, to 43 and Fairchild, try and get in and out of that Sheetz gas station at rush hour. 43 is a four-lane highway. You still have a hard time getting in and out. You can't turn left, you have to turn right, same way on Fairchild. Not everybody wants to go right, a lot of people want to go left. Now you're going to tie up more traffic, have accidents, fender benders. That's, that's my take on the whole thing. I think you'd be better served to move the station across the street. The Rebel station over there is a very low-volume station. Got more land, more room to build your, your gas station at. We don't need three stations on one corner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tammy Gyris, I live at 4772 Lawson Drive in Stowe. I'm just going to kind of reiterate what you've heard, I think three gas stations there is overkill. You're not even on any kind of a, close to the interstate or a state highway. You're on two-lane roads and again, you have two elementary schools close. You're going to have the Sheets, like their, their convenience store and you know kids are going to be wanting to run down there and go into it, which is going to exasperate the fact of traffic trying to get in and out, backing up. There's always a problem with the Dollar General, people trying to pull left out of there and it backs up into the intersection. I just think, it's just overkill for that area. I, I kind of wonder if you know why that corner was picked for Stowe? Like what, what made you think two gas stations already there constituted the need of a third gas station? And I'm not, you know, you guys are just Sheetz workers, I'm not going to pin it all on you, but I just feel like Stowe needs to look at the bigger picture once in a while. Not just, oh, I've got some property and somebody wants to build something on it, okay, I'm going to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in that row? The last row, anybody? No one else? Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? All right. Can I hear a motion?
Sorry, uh.
Yep, go ahead.
I just wanted to know, I, if you would like us to answer any of the questions that came from the public comments?
I don't think so, as someone else does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, and as a reminder, as you make a motion, just make sure to clarify which plan you'd be voting on, whether it's the original or the revised with the additional variance.
Absolutely, absolutely, and do we have any comments other than these?
No, I was just going to say, we received seven emails, I gave you all copies, I emailed them and they'll be with the minutes.
Yep. Okay. We need a motion of some type.
Yeah, so this is the original. Again, the, really the only difference is, takes place back in this area along the drive-through. So this is the original. This just, this does show the revised, with just shortening that landscaped island. The original shows two trees in that island, they'd be taking one of those trees and putting up at the access drive. One tree will be remaining, but overall, that's, that's the biggest difference. Again, the revised will require variance for not meaning that 5% of interior parking lot landscaping.
Well, I moved it on the revised plan. PC 2024-048 to deny the request. Somebody either has a second or it's going to die, one or two.
A second.
Point of information as well, this would be for a negative recommendation to the council. So if you're voting yes, you are voting in favor of a negative recommendation. Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, correct. Any other questions before we vote? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Treptow?
Yes.
Mr. DeCuliac?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, so again, to clarify, that's a recommendation for denial.
Correct.
Uh, this will be on the planning committee agenda for March 6.
All right, on to new business.
Yes, if you want to give me the dongle. Get it set up real quick. No one else has to stick around for this, this is a training on public records and open meetings. I mean, you're welcome to, I'd love to have the audience, but I'll give everyone an opportunity to walk out before I start talking, if you want. I know what I'm presenting on. I don't have no illusions about this.
That's, no, that's planning committee with the council. Yeah, we're done.
I'm a smart guy, really I am. I have four, four-year college degrees, advanced degrees in mathematics and physics, and I taught astronomy for 22 years.
Think your kids were in?
On Fish Creek Road.
Like having to download on my computer first. Mr. Chairman, just a, just a reminder, we're, we're still in the meeting. I serve at your pleasure, so you're not delaying me. I, I made the assumption, like I real, realization while we were sitting here, I think all of you have been through this training already, but, so we can breeze through it, just as a quick, yes, we, we presented, I didn't present it, Jeff, I think Steve presented it to you guys last, but this is the same presentation, so just a heads up. You don't have to flatter me, I. No one else wanted to hear it. And just, just for the record too, this is the second time tonight I am giving this presentation. I just came from the Commission on Inclusion to give this exact same presentation. So I've got all the bugs and zingers out and I'm ready to go. All right, so real quickly, um, be, uh, as the planning commission, and I, every one of you have been, has been through this already. We are subject to Public Records, Open Meetings Act and Conflicts of Interest, so this is just a quick crash course refresher. I always like to treat these as open dialogues as opposed to lectures. So as questions arise or, you know, you know, specific examples, that sort of thing, don't hesitate to just ju, jump and cut me off, all right? This is, it goes quicker and it's more fun for me if you ask me questions and you try and trip me up, all right? So, we'll start off with public records, we'll move into Open Meetings Act and then we'll, we'll finish up with conflicts of interest. Uh, and first, part one, what is a public record? And of course, there's a statutory definition because lawyers like to write these things. And, uh, it has to have these three criteria. It has to be, I see Jeff, that I'm already frilling you with the statutory definition. Uh, no, you're fine, it's a, it has to be a document, device or item. It has to be created or received by the public office and it has to serve to document the functions of the office. And it has to have all three of these things, or it is not considered a public record. So first, a document, item or device, it's intentionally broad. It's to try and capture the medium in which the record exists. So what I like to say is that the thing has to exist. It can't be an idea, it can't be a summary that is in your, your own mind. It can't be a discussion, it has to be something that physically exists, whether that's electronically, whether that's in digital format, whether it's a paper copy, but it has to actually be tangible, all right? So, like I said right there, unrecorded conversations and thoughts, those aren't public records because they're not documents, items or devices. And we don't have to create the record, that's the other thing. So if someone calls and says, I want a summary of all that was said tonight, that's not something that already exists. Now, the meeting minutes will exist and the sign-in sheet will exist, but your summary or your perception of what, like, what was the, if, if someone made a public records request and asked tonight, I want what was the basic general feeling of the, what the citizens were saying? That's not a public record because it's not something that actually exists. I don't have to create it, I don't have to create the summary or say, it seemed about 97% of the people that talked, talked about this. That's not a public record, it doesn't meet the document, item or device criteria. It has to be created, received or coming under the jurisdiction of the office. That means that we either have to create it as the public office or we have to receive it. So if someone came up tonight to give a comment and held up a flyer and said, I got this flyer from Sheets and it says all this stuff, and they, they don't give it to you and turn it over to you, even though it was brought up at public, they could, they could even pass it around and pass it to each member of the commission, but then they take it back at the end of the night, it hasn't come under the, under the, uh, it hasn't been created or received coming under the, the actual jurisdiction of the office. One exemption to this is if we were to hire a law firm and the law firm or a public, if we were to hire to do any, any public body or a private company to do something on our behalf. So the, uh, a good one for you guys is, we're hiring the, um, Halsey Levine to give a report on the planning code and then write the, rewrite the zoning code, right? Even if they never turn that over to you, it's still your, our document because we hired them to create it. So even though it's not technically ours or in our control, it's still our document because it was created by us. Another example I like to throw out here where it says resumes collected. So if someone said, I want all the resumes for the people who applied for the commanding, the planning commission position in Ward 1, we would have to turn that over, all the, all the resumes for that. Now, if we opened applications on Monday and someone called on Monday and said, I want all the resumes and I want all the resumes that are going to be applied for this position, we don't have to turn over future resumes because they haven't come into our control yet. We'd have to turn over any that we had, and then if the person a week later said, and now I'd like all the resumes that have come in, we'd have to turn it over then. But you can't preemptively make a public records request for things that might be created or might come into our jurisdiction at that point. Any questions on that? Nope. All right. And then serves to document the organization and function of the office. So this means that it has to directly relate to what you guys are doing here on Planning Commission. So if you send an email out that says, you know what, this was a long meeting tonight, Let's all go grab dinner right after this meeting and we're not going to talk about business. Let's just go do it just so we have, we can get a load off, right? That probably is not a public record because it doesn't serve to document the function of the organization. It's a personal thing. It's a personal. It's a personal item you guys are talking about. Just because you guys are all on the planning commission doesn't mean everything you talk about amongst yourselves serves to serves to document the function of the office. And then also, so like the example I like to give, too, is if you were to send an email that actually had business in it, right? You talk about, you know, we have an item, I know Jeff sends an email to Marion. He's like, we got, we got an item that's that's pretty pretty topical coming up and it's 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 difficult and it's this item, whatever. And then at the end of the email, he starts talking about how terrible Michigan is. Uh, because. Okay. We'd have to turn over. I was gonna say, are we making it a public actual document that Michigan is terrible of the planning commission? No. So anyway, the. The the actual, so that email is still a public record, but we could redact the personal part of it. So the parts that don't actually serve to function as parts of this organization aren't public records, all right? So don't worry if in the future you have, because I mean, we have personal conversations, you know, hey, how's your son doing, that sort of thing? Those parts are not public records. Same thing like if you have a you're having a conversation and you throw at the end, and here's my personal cell phone number in case you ever need to get ahold of me. We can redact that, so it's not a public record, all right? It has to do serve to document the function of the office. Any questions on that? All right, so and I think we've we've already been over this before. How what how should you guys monitor compliance and actually do? Do your best practices on this? And the number one thing is appoint one person to be that person, and you guys are lucky. You have Jamie, who is your point person on public records. That she does, and we'll we'll make that an official public record of the planning commission. Jamie does a wonderful job for the planning commission. And so a best practice, just as an FYI, is if you are having emails within the the planning commission, just CC Jamie on all of those so that we have a record of that email. Because in the off chance you get, I you guys, some of you were on here for the Miller's Landing. And there were all voluminous public records about Miller's Landing. And if you had a private email between Lynn and Jeff that just like that talked about Miller's Landing, but it was just between the two of you. And I was turning over all the records and someone asked for all the all the emails that were sent on this. And I didn't turn over that one because I didn't know it existed. I we could get in trouble, the city could, and it would be statutory damages that we would have to pay out. So the best practices include Jamie on those conversations so that the city has a record of them. And that way, you guys don't have to retain the record even after your term ends because we have it somewhere documented. You guys won't have to worry about this as much because most of the time, if you get a public records request, you're forwarding it to Jamie. Jamie's gonna talk to me, but the law department's always happy to assist as well if you get a public records request and you're not sure how to handle it. And you guys don't have to do this, but we have to maintain written records of the requests that we receive and all the redactions we make to them, why we redact them. I mean, there's a there's and I can send this over to you. I think I might have said it before. There is a document. It's called the Sunshine Law Manual. If I were to print it out, it's about a yay thick and it gets updated every like two years or so because, and this is my other little tangent because I never got to be a college professor. Who is familiar with the term common law? In a legal context, of course, Jeff. So there are two main styles of legal systems in the world, common law and statutory law. Common law is what the United States runs off of. It runs off of British common law. And it means that there is a statute out there that explains this is the law. And then there is a whole body of cases that judges have decided and further defined. And those cases are impactful on future cases. Other judges have to look at what has what what other judges have said. That's common law. Statutory law is there is a statute, it's written that way, and then judges make decisions, but their decisions aren't impactful on other judges. That's more continental Europe, France, Germany. And another little fun fact for you, there's one state in the United States that kind of follows this. There you go. You got it, Jeff. And I'm assuming you know the reason why. Louisiana Purchase Napoleonic Code, they're based on the French legal system as opposed to the rest of the United States is based off the British common law system. The long or the short of that is there are cases that come out every single day that impact what public records are and aren't. And it changes, so they have to update it every couple of years. So I don't print it off, but I have it saved on my computer. So if any was interested or they're having trouble sleeping at night, let me know. I will forward it on to you and you can take a look at it. But it explains what public records are, what we have to redact, what we don't have to redact, what we can redact, and gives us legal justification for that. Any questions on public records? You're a third of the way done and so 33% masters of this training. Open Meetings Act, you guys are pretty good about this because you 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 have regular meetings and you know that there are requirements. The Open Meeting Act basically requires that any public body has their deliberations in an open meeting. And they do that in several ways. First off, suffice to say, you're a public body. We don't need to get into what public bodies are. You guys are a public body. Now, if you were to create a subcommittee off of the planning commission, I can't think of a situation where you would, but if you do, that subcommittee also becomes a public body. So for purposes of when we're moving on here to what a meeting is. Say you create a subcommittee of two members. Those two members then go to meet to discuss those things. The two members haven't met a majority or quorum of the planning commission, but there is a majority of that subcommittee, so they could be violating public meetings law if they don't follow these other requirements. So just something to keep in mind if you're creating subcommittees that that's an important part of it because you're creating basically partial groups within. It changes the 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 majority and the quorum requirements, all right? So a meeting is defined as a prearranged gathering that a majority member, majority of the members of the public body are at, and you're discussing public business. And it has to be the the deliberating of the public business. It has to pertain to your public business. So if you guys, a majority of you meet up and just happen to be talking about something else of interest in the city. The 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 high school football team and the their games. That's probably not violating the public meeting law because even though you're you you're meeting and there's a majority of you there, you're not really deliberating public business. And the the example I just gave at the Commission on Inclusion is if we start talking about the amphitheater project that we're working on at the city. Chances are you're probably not violating the public meeting law because you're not discussing or deliberating public business. Now, if you guys start talking site plans and very potential variance requirements, you're now creeping into deliberating public business and you could be violating the public meetings. So if you were to talk about like, I know Dan came on one of the one of the bus tours that we went on, and I don't know if any of the other members went on any of the other meetings because I only got to go on one of them. But going on that and discussing the project in general probably is not a problem, but if we start talking and our amphitheater is going to need a variance because of this, then you're running into a problem, all right? And then another point to note, it doesn't have to be called a meeting. If you call it something else, if you're still meeting these criteria, you're violating me. So if you call it a work session or a retreat, it's still a meeting per the law, so you can't try and get around it that way. We've talked about this before, and I think on the last presentation, it said round robin. I still have no idea where that comes from. I've tried to research it, but I've heard it called that at multiple cities that I've worked at. Serial meetings, it's you attempting to try and get around the meeting requirements by having individual phone calls or conversations. So if Jeff calls Mary and says, hey, we have this meeting tonight and we're going to talk about this item and I'm against it. And then Mary calls Lynn and said, I just talked to Jeff and Jeff's against this in this meeting and I'm against the two. And you're able to kind of figure out and deliberate that way, you're violating the meeting law. So the same thing we I pointed out last time as well was reply alls on emails. Those can be sitter can be sitter meetings because you're deliberating amongst yourselves. And something else I want to point out because this is a new area is social media posts. So if something on like Talk of the Town pops up and enough members of the planning commission start saying, as a member of planning commission, I don't like this and I don't think it's good, you could be violating. I'm not going to say you are. It's just courts have been a little bit more willing to now take that into account with with electronic and with virtual meetings, that they're expanding what a meeting is. So I just want to caution you guys on that. That's not to say you cannot get on social media and talk about the things that are coming before your commission, because I think that's also another way to get public input. It's just be aware of who else is commenting on it and the type of conversation that's happening on it, all right? Any questions on that? Because that's a that's a relatively new thing that we've been watching and monitoring at the state level. And so that is the small update from the last time I presented on this that I'd like to throw out there. Like I said, it doesn't have to be in person. It can be on telephone or email. We kind of went through this, what discussion and deliberation were a word. So what doesn't count as a meeting? One of the exceptions, even if it meets all the other criteria, this training doesn't have to be a meeting because it is your legal counsel. I'm your lawyer when you're on planning commission. Some of you that were here for Miller's Landing know that because I represented you when you guys got sued. Would know that things that when I talk as your legal counsel and I give you guys legal advice or if I give you a presentation that kind of gives you legal advice, it it's not, it doesn't have to be considered a meeting. So we could have had this outside of a meeting and just given this and not had to do it at a public meeting. It's just easier for all of you guys that you're already here and we got nothing to hide when it comes to public meetings. And it would be pretty weird if we tried to have a secret meeting to have a presentation on open meetings, right? So that's that's one thing, and we'll get to executive session discussion because that also became a thing, too. Conversations that you guys have with staff members are not considered meetings. And then any question and answer sessions with the legal counsel are not considered public meetings. All right, what are your duties as a public body? It has to, you have to have notice, it has to be open and you have to keep the minutes. Lucky for you guys, two of these things are covered by Jamie, so you don't have to worry about that. She'll make the notices out for you and she will keep the minutes. Now, you have to vote on the minutes and that's what certifies them and makes it an actionable thing. But she's the one that actually prepares them, files them, maintains them and makes sure they're open to the public. So the big thing that you guys have to remember is that these meetings have to be open to the public. That means no whispering amongst yourselves while things are being deliberated, no secret ballots. And it has to actually be open. So we can't say, all right, the meeting starts at 6:00 and we're going to close the door and lock it at 6:00. So if you're not in here at 6:00, you're not coming in. Even though it was theoretically open, it's not open because we lock the doors. So that's your guys' big requirement is make sure the meeting's open. And I think you guys do a fine job of that, especially with all the comments and allowing people to comment. Any questions on that? You guys don't really have meetings other than regular meetings, but there are other types of meetings, special meetings and emergency meetings. That's more for council, so I won't go through all the the boring details on it. They have different notice requirements and different things that can be deliberated at them. So just suffice to say, there's different types of meetings and there are different requirements for them. And then finally, on open meetings, executive sessions. Executive sessions are when we're able to adjourn from the meeting, so the meeting is still going on, but we recess to another area and have a private conversation about various things. You can only do this in certain instances. It's listed in the statute. They're listed up there. And you have to say the reason you are abjuring to executive session before you do it. So if you are familiar with a council meeting, they'll say, and now we will adjourn to executive session to discuss the hiring or firing of a public employee. And then they have to take a roll call vote to actually do it. Planning Commission actually had this when Miller's Landing was brought up and there was the lawsuit filed and it was because pending or imminent court action. We adjourned. We have our private meeting. I'm able to discuss things there. Now, what I will say is Jamie will follow us into that meeting and she will continue to take notes of that meeting. Those notes will not become part of the official meetings, but they will be kept. And the reason for that is if someone were to sue the city and say, you went into executive session because you said you were going to talk about personnel matters and then you got back there and you discussed a new policy that you're going to invoke. We can then use that as a defense and say, no, we didn't. Here are the minutes. This is what was discussed. And a a big thing about that is we can't take action when we're in executive session. We can discuss things, but we cannot vote on anything. We would come back from executive session, restart the meeting and then take action if we need to. Any question on executive sessions? It's very rare for organizations for boards, commissions outside of city council. But it's happened and two people in this room were familiar for that were here when it happened last time. So I would be remiss if I didn't bring it up as a potential thing that can happen in the future. Anybody can make the motion. Any 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 member of the any member of the commission can make the motion. And I would also say it's also good practice to mention on the record who you are inviting into executive session with you. So if you wanted to invite me in to discuss the legal matter, you it would be a good idea to put it on the record that you are inviting your legal counsel into the meeting as well. Or maybe it's something that concerns Zach as well. You would want to mention that you are inviting Zach into the executive session as well, just so we have a record of it and it's it's clear what we talked about and why we talked about it. It's a good question, though, Jeff. Any other questions? No, I like it. Because now you're two thirds of the way done, all right? All right, finally, conflicts of interest. This is this is this is an interesting one because there are two main types of conflicts of interest. One, in which you would accept something of value in return for an action that you would take as a member of this commission. Or two, where you take an action on something that directly benefits you, a business partner, a business venture or a close family member. Those are the two different types. We'll go through exactly what they each mean, but just suffice to say they're conflicts of interest if they broach into those two categories, all right? All right, so if you think there's a conflict of interest, one of those two situations apply. What do you need to do? You need to abstain entirely from every portion of it. Not just, and I give this example, you can't say, I have to abstain from this. I can't because my 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 fam, my my wife is the applicant. But I still think you guys should vote for this because I think it's a really good idea, but I I have to stay out of it because I can't vote. That still is a conflict of interest because you are using your position on the commission to then do something in furtherance of it, all right? So you and I list up here abstain from voting, discussing, reviewing, recommending, inspecting and investigating or taking any action. Just step away, stay silent. You can even say at the beginning, I'm abstaining from this because I have a conflict of interest and then sit silently. And then when the vote comes around, make sure you say, you know, all in favor, all opposed, I abstain. And that way we have a record of it that you abstained as well. If you're unsure, call the law department. We 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 are well versed in this. We know the case law. We know where to look to. If we don't know the answer right away, we can do the research and tell you. That way also, if it comes out in the future, you did have a conflict and we told you you didn't. You relied on legal counsel, so you have, there's there's some protections for the city because you relied on my advice, even if my advice was wrong, all right? All right, so when we're talking about accepting things of value in return for your votes, the thing of value is the important thing. It's not just the value of the item or the thing that's being traded. It's also you have to look at the source, all right? That's how a thing of value is determined or substantial value is determined. Because yes, it's important to know what the value or what the thing is you're getting, but who it comes from is also important. And the example I like to give is so something on here like a a loan or a private job or travel. Could it's 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 obviously a substantial value, right? But if my mother-in-law were to pay for a trip to Italy, it's the the source isn't improper because she's not doing it because I'm the law director of the city. She's doing it because she's my mother-in-law and she's taking the family places. So that's why I say it's important to look at both where it comes from and what it is. And I I was just using the example, too, like when my wife gives me a birthday gift. We like to think she's giving it to me because she loves me, right? Not because I'm the law director for the city. So let's just assume that for the purpose. So look at the source as well. So look at the source as well as what the item is. And I also like to make the joke here too, we put entertainment such as golf outings or sporting, sport tickets, so even though the Browns are not great and no one really wants to go there, it's still a thing of value, alright? You could, and I think a lot of people would like to right now. What are things that are not of value? Things like a cup of coffee, box of popcorn, plate of cookies. So if someone crumble cookie, I'm not saying they're going to, but if they said, "You know what, we're gonna, at the next meeting, the Planning Commission, "just drop off some cookies for you", just because you guys are doing a great job, it's probably not a thing of value. Now, if they do it for every meeting, it could be considered a thing of value. Or if they have an item that they're asking for a variance, maybe it can be considered a thing of value, alright? So it's not clear cut, and it's, so it just, it depends on the situation. I think some of you that were around for the, when Jamie gave this presentation, for some reason it was listed picture frames was not a thing of value that they had to specifically announce. I didn't understand that, so I just took it out because I think it's odd, but don't worry, picture frames are not considered things of value either. And then we talked about improper source. So if they're seeking to do business, they're regulated by you guys, or they're interested before the agency. So just look to who's giving the gift as well. And then finally, the other part, I don't really have a separate slide on this, but if it's something that directly relates to your family member, you have a family member that's applying for a variance, just abstain entirely from the voting. And I, those are more so that like, as they come up, ask the Law Department, because I can't give you an exhaustive list of what's considered a family member, what's considered a business interest, that sort of thing, just call and ask. Again, any conversation you have with me as well when I'm giving you legal advice, it's also exempt from public records too. So if you send me an email asking me about something, that's not a public record, even though it serves to document the function. It's a public record, but it's exempt from disclosure. And that's, that's what that huge book that I talk about talks about, all the exemptions to public records, that even if it's considered a public record, we still don't have to disclose it, or we can redact certain parts of it. So, any questions on conflict of interest? Bada bing, you guys are done. Recertified again, alright? Thank you for listening and bearing with you. I also, I think everyone has it, but I have my updated business card as well. I'll just give it as you guys are leaving. I also have some other little gifts if anybody wants them too, so. It is a thing of value because it's a lot of cool information, but the source isn't improper. But good question, Mary. Means you paid attention, I like it.
Alright, who wants to make a motion?
I second.
Aye.